As all members have received a copy of the call for tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Dr. Carlson, can you hear me? Thank you. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. Welcome to the December meeting of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM Moderator. That's what I thought. But, whatever you'd like. You are the boss. See, Dr. Carlson told me he could hear me fine back there. How's that? Can we hear me? Well, that's because I turned it off. Okay. All right. Let's hope that works. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our October 27 meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. I do have one change. In the list of absent members, Adam Savitz of District 11 was listed as absent. In fact, he was present and voted at that October meeting, so we will make that change. Are there any other suggested changes to our October minutes? Mary Ferry, District 5. The attendance count will also be corrected. Thank you. Further suggested changes to our October minutes. Hearing none and absent objection, the October minutes as amended stand adopted upon unanimous consent. Peter Tessie, our First Selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. I just want to take a few moments on a couple of items. The first being, in the hallway, as you enter the auditorium, there is a survey with respect to the criteria the town is looking to develop for new sidewalk construction. We would ask that you, if you so choose to pick one up and to complete it and return it, it will help the Department of Public Works and the Advisory Committee that I appointed come to a conclusion as to what criteria the town will use on a go-forward basis. Understand that this is not to lobby for or request a specific sidewalk in your neighborhood. It is to ascertain from you what you believe to be the criteria the town should use in making future determinations on where to put new sidewalks. So, please, if you are so inclined, fill out the survey and return it to us so we can incorporate it. Number two, I want to thank the moderator in particular for supporting and assisting me in distributing to all of you the Budget Directive memo dated November 26 that I sent to all town departments and the Board of Education. Undoubtedly, we are facing one of the most challenging economic environments, certainly in my lifetime and maybe many of yours, and as a community, we must work together to meet this challenge. Prior to that memo being sent, we've had several months of conversations with town department heads about the realities of the world we're living in today. Those realities focus on reducing expenditures in departmental budgets wherever possible. We're going to carefully scrutinize not only salary but non-salary areas and capital as well. That memo was designed to codify the communications that have been ongoing, again, with town department heads as well as the Board of Education. Your support and willingness to work with us will help us achieve our goal, and as of last Friday, had the opportunity to work with several of your colleagues at the resolutions that you may be taking up later this evening. I view these resolutions as a positive thing in that they are an expression of your concerns and sentiments. I specifically appreciate when they can be more specific. We are trying to manage this problem not based upon emotion but based on facts, and we're looking at the information internally in terms of our revenue projections to date, where they stand with regard to conveyance, with conveyance taxes, which is the tax we receive on the sale of property, with building permits and interest. And we know we are looking at today approximately a $7.5 million shortfall if you were to annualize those particular sources. So, we're looking at things very carefully. The town administrator and I are meeting with town departments to review their current year's budget, the 8-9-1, to see where they can realize economies and help us fill this gap, as well as looking at next year. So, again, I appreciate your help in communicating. That actually is the biggest challenge in many respects. It's not so much the actual economic conditions as it is communicating effectively with all of you and the other parts of our town government, to see to it that we work collaboratively. So, again, thank you, and I look forward to your meeting this evening.
Thank you. Dr. Evan Delman, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Good evening. One year ago, the Town Services Committee brought a sense of the meeting resolution to this body. The resolution outlined several different mechanisms to provide public meeting information and notifications to the citizens. The RTM vote on this resolution was unanimous. At this month's committee meeting, Town Services took up and reviewed that resolution, as well as the impact of recent state legislation concerning website and public notifications. The Town Service Committee voted to request, through you, Mr. Moderator, that the Law Department and any other appropriate town department necessary review Public Act Number 08-3 with respect to the town's website and provide the current status of implementing the policy described in the December 2007 RTM resolution. The Town Service Committee further requests that the appropriate departments or personnel report back to the body as part of the January 2009 Representative Town Meeting.
Dr. Delman, I elect to delegate that responsibility to you. So, if you would follow up on that and report back to us. In fact, you are correct, there have been amendments made to the Freedom of Information Act which do require minutes and all other notices to be posted on a town website where the town has a website, and there have been meetings with the Law Department in that regard. Of course, that requires cooperation from Town Hall, which controls the website. So, that's certainly one issue. The other issue about notices in the Town Hall lobby, of course, is another. One effect of that sense of the meeting resolution that was adopted a year ago was that the bulletin board in the lobby of Town Hall, which was dedicated to the RTM, was lost to the RTM and was to be used for all public notices. So, you know, sometimes we have to be careful what we ask for. But if you would then follow up on that issue and report back to us...
Do I get to handpick a committee?
Well, it's now in your lap if you choose to delegate further. Thank you, Dr. Delman. Because of the memorandum that was distributed to you, asking, from the First Selectman to all department heads, asking for cuts of 10% in the current year's budget, you can see, we have turned the lights out on our clerks up here. No matter how hard we try, we can't turn them on. But in addition, that does apply, although the RTM budget is a lean one and provides primarily just for the clerks to attend and keep track of the business that is conducted here, we want to do our part. And because we hold eight meetings a year, if we were to cancel one meeting, that would go a long way to doing our part in saving 10% on our budget. As many of you know from historical purposes, the RTM never had an April meeting until 1996, if I'm correct. It may have been a few years earlier. So, the intention right now is to cancel the April meeting, and if our directory is correct, that is scheduled for April 13th of 2009. If there are circumstances that require that we hold that meeting, of course, we will. But the First Selectman's office has indicated that that is acceptable, and in fact, they welcome that development. So, the word should go out to all department heads. Please, for planning purposes, keep in mind our May meeting is dedicated to the budget for the coming fiscal year. So, if there is business that needs to be brought to the RTM, we will have a March meeting, and then we would have a June meeting. And again, if circumstances arise where there is a need for the April meeting, we will have one. But right now, I am alerting everyone that there is a strong likelihood that the April meeting will be canceled. Mr. Edwards?
I don't know how to ask for the complaint information or ask a question, but why can't it be a December meeting? There seem to be so many plenary meetings in that spring that it seems arbitrary anyway whether to do one in April or one in December unless there's good reasons to not do the December meeting. And also, can we vote on it?
I assume you did then say, "next December." You're not talking about this meeting. The concern, the immediate concern, Mr. Edwards, was fiscal '08-'09 budget. So, December '09 is the next fiscal year. We are looking for a way to cut the budget in the current fiscal year. All right. I did send out a notice to all district and committee chairs on my suggested organization of our calendar tonight, based upon the reports received from our districts and committees. And the recommendation was to put four items on our consent calendar. Those were Items 5, 6, 7, and 9. The combined calendar would have six items on it, Items 2, 8, 10, 11, 12, and 13, which would leave for considering separately Items 1, 3, 4, 15, and 16, and the District 10 Sense of the Meeting Resolution, which hopefully everyone has notice of. That notice went out over the weekend at the latest.
14.
What's that?
I left 14 out.
Yes, and 14 was in the combined items. That's right. So, that would be seven items on the combined calendar. Thank you. All right. With respect to that Sense of the Meeting Resolution, that is not on our agenda, which is the call. And the Freedom of Information Act provides that items not on a published agenda can be taken up at a regular meeting, and this is a regular meeting of the RTM, provided that there is first a motion to take it up that is adopted by a two-thirds vote. That's two-thirds of those present and voting. And if there is a member who is present who abstains or who's not in the room and doesn't vote on a card, those abstentions and those persons who don't vote are not counted for the two-thirds calculation. And that motion to take up a non-agenda item will be non-debatable. We all are aware of the issues, so we will take that up. We will not have debate twice, whether to take it up, and if it's taken up, then debate it again. So, it is my intention to go through our call the way that, well, we'll see how it ends up being organized, but that is my suggestion, and the Sense of the Meeting Resolution would be the last item that we take up. Yes, sir?
Where do we get the resolution if we didn't have it yet?
Well, I'll ask if there is a copy that anyone has that can share it with those who perhaps haven't seen it. I forwarded to the district, I forwarded to the district and committee chairs the text of the resolution. And then the district chairs hopefully forwarded to their members. Okay. So, that is the way we will proceed tonight. So, at this point, pursuant to our rules, I will designate the following four items for our consent calendar. Pursuant to our rules, any item that remains on our consent calendar will not be reported on by committees, and there will be no discussion of those items. The only information that will be provided regarding items on our consent calendar is the description that I give when I place those items on it. If there is any objection to items being placed on the consent calendar, if such an objection is supported by 20 members, that will be taken off the consent calendar. So, the first of the four items is Item Number 5. This is a resolution to appoint Lloyd Bankson to a term beginning April 1, 2009, to the Nathaniel Witherell Board, and the term would expire March 31, 2012. Next item is Item 6. That is the appointment of Louis Pataco to the Board of Ethics for a term beginning April 1, 2009, and expiring March 31, 2012. Next item is Item Number 7, the appointment of Paul DeBarry to the Board of Ethics for a term beginning April 1, 2009, and expiring March 31, 2012. And the last of the items I am placing on the consent calendar is Item Number 9, the appointment of Lloyd Hall to be an alternate member of the Historic District Commission with a term beginning April 1, 2009, and expiring March 31, 2014. Are there any objections to those four items being placed on the consent calendar? Hearing none, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Consent Calendar Items 5, 6, 7, and 9, and proceed to poll your delegation? While we are voting, we will take up the first of, no, I'm sorry. At this point, I will now suggest a motion to suspend the rules to combine Items 2, 8, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 for voting purposes. Is there such a motion? It has been moved and seconded to combine Items 2, 8, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 for voting purposes. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of suspending the rules and combining Items 2, 8, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion has carried. So, we will take up Item 2 as the first of the combined items. Continue with the rest of them, and then that would leave Items 1, 3, 4, 15, 16, and the Sense of the Meeting Resolution to be taken up separately. Peter Crumbine, our Selectman, with Item Number 2.
Good evening. Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Nathaniel Witherell Building Committee, Alfred DiSappio.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 2 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with Jerry Isaacson, Chairman of our Health and Human Services Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. DiSappio has spent a great deal of time at Nathaniel Witherell. For one thing, his wife is a resident there. His work has involved laboratory design, product development. He's been on the family council at Nathaniel Witherell and is very well-qualified, I believe, to serve on this building committee. Our vote was 10-0-0.
Thank you.
Districts 1 and 2 were absent.
Mr. Von Keiseling with the report of our Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Merry Christmas and happy holidays to all of you. We met with Mr. DiSappio on the 18th of November. Mr. DiSappio has been mentioned as all the things I talked about with Nathaniel Witherell. He's been extremely active in Nathaniel Witherell and the family council. I know personally that every board meeting that I attend, he's there also, so he's up to speed on project renewal and all the other matters that affect Nathaniel Witherell. More importantly, as a scientist, he was responsible for the management and development of major laboratory installations in excess of $50 to $70 million apiece. So, he's used to dealing with sophisticated, highly regulated, and technical structures such as we're dealing with in a nursing home. We voted for him 12-0-0 and highly recommend him for this position.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 2. Item 8 now comes before us. Item 8.
Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed an alternate member of the Historic District Commission to fill an unexpired term which began April 1, 2006 and expires March 31, 2011.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 8 has been moved and seconded. Franklin Blumer, Chairman of our Land Use Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of town meeting. The Land Use Committee met with Stephen Bishop at our meeting last Monday evening. He is being appointed as an alternate member of the Historic District Commission. He's an avid preservationist. He resides in the Stanwich Historic District, which we created at our last meeting. He, in fact, lives in the oldest house in that district, which was built in 1732. He is a member of the Historic Plaque Committee of the Historical Society of the Town of Greenwich. He is a past president of the Stanford Historical Society, where he practices law. He is a resident, longtime resident of this town. He's actually a graduate of Greenwich High School, class of '67, and he is an attorney, as I said, practicing in Stanford. We voted for him 12 in favor, none opposed, and no abstentions.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with the report of our Appointments Committee.
Ditto. We met with Mr. Bishop sometime last month, and we had extensive discussion with him as his deep experience he's had with the Historical Society in Stanford, and he's a lawyer, which is also useful, particularly with their initiatives of Historic District to make ordinance proposals for us, as well as, as many of you are aware, that the Historic District is a judicatory body when it comes to Historic Districts. They are, in effect, like the Planning and Zoning Commission for Historic Districts, of which we have now three. We highly recommended the gentleman, 12-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 8. Item 10 now comes before us. Mr. Crumbine.
Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency for a term beginning April 1, 2009, and expiring March 31, 2013.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 10 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Blumer with the Land Use Committee report.
The Land Use Committee met with John Conti and with Lawrence Perry, who is the subject of Item 11, last Monday evening. We interviewed them together because they are both renominations of regular members of the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency. The appointments come at a time when two longtime members of that agency are retiring. They are Tom Baptist, who is the current chairman of the committee, and Matt Pop, who, like Mr. Conti, is a landscape architect. Because Mr. Baptist is retiring, that will, of course, leave the chairmanship of the agency open, and Lawrence Perry is the vice-chairman, and therefore the heir apparent, if you will. Mr. Perry has served for 12 years on the agency. He has worked with the past three executive directors, Mike Orellia, who is a member of this body now, Mark Masood, and the current executive director, Michael Chambers. So, he has a considerable amount of experience if he does, in fact, move up into the chairman's position. The situation with respect to Mr. Conti, there were until, there are presently, and there will be until Mr. Baptist drops off, two landscape architects on the agency, and the landscape architect profession has skills which are very important for this agency. Both of them, because they practice locally, have occasional conflicts of interest and are unable to sit on a particular matter. So, it has been a desirable thing for there to be two of them, so that they are, one of the other of them is in a position to serve on a panel for a particular matter. So, it is hoped that another landscape architect will be found to come on to the agency at a future date. One of the subjects that is currently before the agency, which is of particular interest, is the resetting of their fee schedule, and that was a subject of some discussion. What the agency has found is that certain applications take a great deal more time and more staff time than others, and they are seeking to have an additional fee, which is being heard at their meeting this month. That would apply to certain applications, namely those that result in a disturbance of 50% or more of the parcel that they're looking at. So, that seems to be a major item of business that they are currently looking at. We voted separately on the two nominations. The votes on both of them were the same, 12 in favor, none opposed, with no abstentions.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We saw Mr. Perry and Mr. Conti on November the 13th of last month. Mr. Conti has been a longtime member, a lot of what's been said by my confederate on inland wetlands, excuse me, on land use. The discussion in our committee was based on two issues. One was conflict of interest and the other attendance. There was a concern about the attendance of the meetings because Mr. Conti is attending about 70 or less percent of the meetings. We looked, we got a record of the full attendance of the commission, and we find that that was not abnormal. They handle about 20-plus meetings a year with about 20 to 30 applications a meeting, which is a pretty heavy schedule, but they seem to be able to function with that kind of an attendance program. We, so we were concerned, as one of our members said, perhaps there would be even better performance if they attended more often. But the other question was the conflict of interest one, which always arises and we're concerned with. More will be said about some of this when we discuss Mr. Ormsby on the Board of Ethics, excuse me, not Mr. Ormsby. I guess we're not actually going to discuss the Board of Ethics Chairman, are we? His combined, or consent. But in that discussion, we had at the same time, seeing that there was a large discussion about conflict of interest and the work of the Board of Ethics to modernize the Board of Ethics procedure. I would like to take your indulgence for a moment to discuss this, as we're not, because it involves all of us. They have, first of all, a website they put on, so that if you need any information about ethics, it's on a website. It has the codes and everything else, including most frequent questions. They have revamped and created a procedure by which you can make a complaint and the way it's handled, so that everybody, unlike the process we had a few years back with one of our members, where it was questionable how to go about things, there is now a standardized process of handling a complaint and the review of it. Same to do with an advisory opinion because of the FOI problems with not having anonymity. The other thing that they have established is a hotline, if you like, a tip line, where you can call into a number. It doesn't go through the town switchboard, it goes directly to the chairman, and that can be acted on in complete anonymity. It's a whistleblower protection. I just wanted to take your indulgence and put that in because I think it's important. They did also recognize that the Code of Ethics is created by the RTM, and therefore, they were loath to interpret the Code of Ethics as applied to the RTM since its creation, and the RTM has its own rules and should handle its own way of doing it. and the RTM has its own rules and should handle its own way of doing it.
Your point of order is well taken. Mr. Von Kaiseling, you know, you've had-
I thank you for the indulgence. I just thought that this is something you want to know, that they felt that we should be doing the Code of Ethics, not them, as far as any changes. And they have a safe harbor program, so I'd advise you to do that. On Mr. Conti, the question was conflict of interest, because, as was mentioned, he is a practicing landscape architect in the area. We reviewed that, we found that there really wasn't any problem with that, that he was handling himself appropriately, according to guidance he'd gotten from the Board of Ethics. We therefore voted for him eleven zero one. The one abstention was because of attendance.
Thank you. Discussion on item ten. Item eleven now comes before us. Mr. Crumbine.
Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency for a term beginning April first, two thousand and nine, and expiring March thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen, Lawrence Perry.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item eleven has been moved and seconded. We've gotten the Land Use Committee report correct. Do you have anything further to say, Mr. Von Kaiseling?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Perry. Mr. Perry was eleven zero one. District twelve voted for insufficient information on it. Mr. Perry, Mr. Perry wanted, felt that the inland wetlands budget was cash neutral, and they wanted to restructure the fees, as mentioned. I'm thinking if there's anything else I can summarize from the report. I will tell you that, I don't know if you've received this, but I have sent out the copy of the chairman's report on all the minutes of our meetings, as they come up to your district chairman, to be distributed to all of you, so that you will have this before your district meeting. Hopefully, that's been done and saved you some reports.
Discussion on item eleven. Item twelve now comes before us. Mr. Crumbine.
Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Board of Social Services for a term beginning April first, two thousand and nine, and expiring March thirty-first, two thousand and twelve, Mary Ann Ramos.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item twelve has been moved and seconded. Jerry Isaacson with the report of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Yes, this is not the first time that Mary Ann Ramos has been a part of the Town of Greenwich. She served on the Board of Health from nineteen eighty-nine to ninety-four. During that period, was a vice chairperson and also the secretary. So, she's had good experience in the Town of Greenwich on this, these particular, this particular board. She moved away and now is back in town and is eager to serve. Her main experience and education has been in the public health field. There's no question that that is where she has spent her, her major part of her career. The, one part of it that seems to border on her, on the social services area, was that while in Washington, she helped vets after leaving the hospital, and that required a great deal of her, her time while she served at the Pentagon there. But she is highly qualified. She's very eager to serve the town in any capacity that is appropriate, and our vote was nine zero one. District one and two were absent, district eight abstained.
Thank you. Mr. Von Kaiseling with the Appointments Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mary Ann Ramos was before us on the sixteenth, excuse me, the thirteenth. Ms. Ramos is a physician's assistant expert with pages of credentials on training and service. She recently returned from an engagement with the Pentagon, dealing with travel, medicine, and care. She has worked in many venues, organizing and managing professional service to end clients. A decade ago, Ms. Ramos served as distinction on the Board of Health and has continued to work with the Director of Health on catastrophe planning. There was a discussion in our committee of the recent history of challenges facing the Board of Social Services in the implementation of productivity controls and efficient service delivery. Many were still concerned about the difficulty of developing budget and tracking information. Her experience, Ms. Ramos's experience would indicate that she would be an asset to the Board of Social Services, especially since there are a number of members that are retiring. Thank you. We voted for her twelve zero zero.
Thank you. Discussion on item twelve. Item thirteen now comes before us. Once again, Mr. Crumbine.
Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Commission on Aging for a term beginning April first, two thousand and nine, and expiring March thirty-first, two thousand and twelve, John M. Morris.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item thirteen has been moved and seconded. Mr. Isaacson with the Health and Human Services report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jack Morris has spent his entire working career in public relations. He was the senior corporate public relations officer of Citigroup. He retired in two thousand, did some private consulting work until oh seven, and then completely retired. But he's been very active in town, especially with United Way. He headed the residential campaign at one year for that, that body. He sees Greenwich with a diverse senior population that needs to be served. He feels that the present senior center is inadequate. That's a subject for another, another day, but those were his feelings that he expressed. Our vote on Mr. Morris was ten zero zero, district one and two absent.
Thank you. Mr. Von Kaiseling with the Appointments Committee report.
Thank you. We met with the pleasure of meeting Jack Morris on the thirteenth of November. He's replacing Ms. Sue. The vote was eleven zero zero, district twelve was absent. Mr. Morris is accompanied by Sam Dibler, the chairman, excuse me, director of the Commission on Aging, and we discussed the background of Mr. Morris as a senior public relations expert and his service on other town organizations, particularly the United Way, where he became familiar with a myriad of services and needs of our senior citizens. Mr. Dibler supported the need for Mr. Morris's services. As I say, we voted for him eleven zero zero.
Thank you. Discussion on item thirteen. Item fourteen now comes before us. Amy Seabird, Commissioner of Public Works.
Good evening. Item fourteen, resolved that the Town of Greenwich Department of Public Works Sewer Division be allowed to accept a grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. Further resolved that the sum of a hundred and ninety thousand, eighty dollars be, and the same, is hereby appropriated to be added to grant account number F three six one five nine six five zero dash two nine zero eight nine, known as wet weather slash nutrient removal.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item fourteen has been moved and seconded. Pamela Frederick, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Good evening, Ms. Moderator, members, guests. This item was presented to the Finance Committee by Commissioner Seabird. Public Works was appropriated four hundred seventy-five thousand in this year's budget for Grass Island Waste Water Treatment Plant Project, and that project was to reduce nitrogen discharge into the Long Island Sound, and this occurs typically during heavy rains. They're seeking this grant from the state to fully fund the project cost. The project entails developing a wet, wet weather plan, as well as automating tank gates to control the nitrogen removal process during peak wet weather. The town's permit sets annual nitrogen discharge limits, which will decline from fifty percent, and that's nine hundred fifty, nine hundred fifty-seven pounds per day in two thousand and two, and it's declining to four hundred seventy-nine pounds per day in two thousand and fourteen. Depending on the rates that are set annually by the state, the town is able to either generate revenue by selling credits for resulting from having lower discharge levels, or we incur an expense if we have excess levels. This project will help to prepare the town to meet the much lower permit level and will be used, will be using proven technology. The committee was supportive of the grant, and we voted twelve zero zero in favor.
Thank you. David Melick, Chairman of our Public Works Committee.
Public Works met last Monday night in Town Hall, very well reported by Finance. The grant is, is really to just provide us with funding, really, I think, to support what was a project in a long time of development. It's been planned, it's been budgeted and approved to upgrade Grass Island. One keynote that came out in our discussions in the committee was that the problem is peak water flows during rainstorms, and the cause of that is known as INI, inflow and infiltration, which basically is inflows into the sewer systems or from, either from the groundwater or other sources, such as illegal connections. With the lowering of the potential, the standards going forward, we may have capital expenses that we're going to need to incur in order to continue to suppress the INI. It's also something that occurs when the system degrades. So, it's not something that's going to go away, but the project as a whole shows our commitment to improve Long Island Sound, and we appreciate the grant, and we voted nine zero zero. Districts one, two, and three were absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item fourteen. That brings us to the end of the combined items. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, combined items two, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, and proceed to poll your delegation? I do have the results of the vote on the consent calendar. Those were four appointments, items five, six, seven, and nine. Those in favor, one seventy-five; opposed, one; abstaining, zero. Those consent calendar items have carried. We will now take up the first of our separate items. All we have remaining are items one, three, four, fifteen, sixteen, and the district ten sense of the meeting resolution. Al Kava, Director of Labor Relations, with item number one.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting, good evening. Item number one, resolved that the sum of one hundred twenty-three thousand, nine hundred thirty dollars for the fiscal year two thousand eight oh nine be in the same as hereby appropriated to carry out the terms of the negotiated two-year collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Greenwich and the Silver Shield Association, Inc. of the Town of Greenwich. Further resolved at the representative town meeting of the Town of Greenwich, hereby approve such provisions of the agreement, if any, which may be in conflict with any charter provisions, special act ordinance rule, or regulation of the Town of Greenwich, in the meeting of Connecticut General Statute, section seven dash four seventy-four.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item number one has been moved and seconded. Joan Caldwell, Chairman of our Labor Contracts Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting. As Mr. Kava just indicated, this item is approval of the contract between the Town of Greenwich and the Silver Shield Uniformed Police Officers. There are approximately a hundred and fifty-two, a hundred and fifty-four officers covered by the contract. The explanatory comments say a hundred and fifty-two. I think that's the number that are actually receiving checks at this moment. I think that there are a couple of vacancies, so the unit is slightly larger. It is a two-year contract, going from July, the past July oh eight, and extending through June two thousand and ten. It is a two-year contract, as I said, with a general wage increase of three and a half percent in the first year, three and three-quarters percent in the second year. The contract does ask the men to share a greater portion of their health insurance premiums with the town. That's something we've been trying to get in all the contracts, and we've been successful so far. It also increases the amount that the person in, the uniform men will pay on their drug insurance or their drug prescriptions from five, fifteen, and thirty dollars, depending on what kind of medication they're getting, to five, twenty-five, and forty. The cost of the base year of the, of the, for the Silver Shield, that's the year that ended, June thirtieth, two thousand and eight. Last June was nineteen million, one hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars. The first year of this contract, the year we're in right now, that will increase to nineteen million, eight hundred, ten thousand dollars. And in the second year, the total increase is twenty million, five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Increases also are provided to the employees for their 401Ks. We give them an additional one hundred and fifty dollars this year, matching contribution, and an additional one hundred and fifty next year. There is also an increase in the hourly rate for men who are working on the midnight shift, that's the, I, they call it the early shift, and the late shift, which is in place now. The Labor Contracts Committee voted to recommend approval of this contract, four in favor, none opposed. This contract was negotiated in the spring-
Mr. Edwards, could you please rise and state your point of information?
Does that include women, sir?
Yes, Mr. Edwards, it does. Equal opportunity. This contract was negotiated during the late spring, early summer, and went through the summer months on into fall. It was a time when none of us really knew the ti, the difficulties we were going to be facing right now, and therefore the three-five and the three-seven-five were not considered to be that onerous or difficult for the town. Were we to negotiate the contract now, it is conceivable we would be a little bit more prudent. I don't know as prudent as the word. We probably would have gone for a smaller increase. However, we didn't, and the contract was agreed to. It would be wrong to turn it back. It would be wrong to try to negotiate it. A contract is a contract. It's a shake of the hand between the uniform men and the town. We wanted to go for a multi-year contract. By multi-year, I mean three or four years, which is what we've had with this group of employees. However, at the time that contract negotiations were about to begin, tensions between the police department and the administration were high. The previous first selectman was, had a rather tenuous relationship with the police department, to say the least. The new first selectman had not been in office long enough to be able to reestablish the rapport between the department and the town. It was the feeling of the Labor Contracts Committee that we were much better advised to go for a two-year contract, give them an increase, let the relationship between the town and the men rebuild, and then, in a later contract, we'll go for a longer multi-year contract. As I say, we recommend your approving it by four to zero. Now, if I might just digress for one minute. Within the past couple of weeks, we have heard, I particularly, from many of you in the town meeting, indicating your concern, your distress, your unhappiness, any number of words, about the size of wage settlements and GWI increases, at a time when you yourselves are not seeing increases. You're seeing, in some cases, loss of work, loss of revenue, loss of assets. We understand that. The committee hears you, and right after the first of the year, the committee will meet with the first selectman, and the two items on the agenda are the two that you have given to us, zero increase in GWI and cross-training. Cross-training, for those of you who may not be aware of the term, means that a person can be trained for two jobs. It gives us the flexibility of moving personnel from a department that's having a seasonal lull into a department that is having a seasonal overflow.
Thank you. Pam Frederick with the report of our Finance Committee.
Good evening. The item was, covered all the points that the- The item was, covered all the points that the Finance Committee discussed during our committee meeting. I will note that there was also great concern with the level of increase, but again, we were supportive of the contract that was fairly negotiated and agreed to with the collective bargaining agreement, and it was also noted during that discussion that the 3.5% and 3.75% increases were within the range of comparable towns where the average is 3% to 5% increases, in addition to the fact that we have a great sharing in terms of healthcare costs. Our vote in this month was 12, I'm sorry, this month was 11-0-0 in favor. District 6 was not present at the time of that vote. However, when we voted on this originally in October, the committee voted 12-0-0 unanimously in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Delman with the report of our Town Services Committee.
We met with Al Kava on Tuesday evening. This item was pulled from a call previously because it had not yet been ratified by the Silver Shield Association. There's nothing much to add to the prior two reports. Town Services voted 12-0-0 in favor of this item without debate or discussion.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 1. Jim Buttel, District 8.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, I am one of the members of the Labor Contracts Committee that voted for this item. I believe, Joan, it was late September, early October, so it was a different time at that point. I just want to take exception to one comment that a previous speaker made in giving the Labor Contracts Report, saying a handshake's a handshake, the deal's been negotiated. If that's the case, why bring contracts to you? It's not a contract until this body votes on it. We are the deciding body in settling labor contracts. I stood up before you all when we brought up the teachers' contract, pointed out that with those rate increases, if we as a full body approved them, I, within the committee, had voted against that contract, that with the approaching economic environment, we would have no choice but to cut certified teaching positions. I suspect we will run into the same position with police if things do not improve economically, and, you know, the first place we're going to see the call for is to cut police on Greenwich Avenue, and I know this body's gone on record as not wanting that to happen. So if we're going to negotiate these increases, if times change dramatically, this body should have the right and the responsibility to turn down a contract if it so desires. I do intend still to vote for the contract myself, but I do want to make the point that it is this body, not the Labor Contracts Committee, not the negotiator. It is this body that approves contracts.
Further discussion on Item 1. Mary Ferry, District 5.
Mr. Moderator, if there is any consideration of turning down this contract, then the body should be aware of the consequences, and would someone please explain that to us? What happens if we do turn one down?
All right. Mr. McLaughlin, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is this is a negotiated agreement that we have the right to reject. We don't have to approve it. It takes effect if we don't approve it within a period of time. If we exercise the right to reject it, it would then go to binding arbitration, and after that process is completed, we would again have the right to reject the award from the binding arbitration process. And if that occurs, we would have to articulate the reason we rejected it, and then it goes back for a final decision over which we would have no review. So ultimately, it goes to an arbitration process, is the summary. Mr. McLaughlin, do you agree with that?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, except that there is, it was not approved at this meeting, like on my.
Why don't you step forward, if you would, please? Gene McLaughlin, our Assistant Town Attorney.
Mr. Moderator, Members of the representative town meeting, if the agreement is not approved by this body at this time, I believe that the option under the general statutes is that the parties would go back to some type of negotiation, and I checked that out with, before this meeting, with our Labor Contracts Officer, Mr. Kava, and I believe that's correct. Is that right? Yes. Then, as you stated, Mr. Moderator, if it does not reach an agreement through further negotiation, it goes the route that you said.
So you're saying there's not an automatic arbitration process that is triggered? There would still be an opportunity for negotiation. Whatever was negotiated would come back again to the RTM?
Yes, if it, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling, District 8.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the body. I am in favor of this contract, but this is the last one through the door in my mind. We're talking all day this last week about the problem of finances in the town that's coming up. I would point out to you that if you looked at that article in the Greenwich Time last Sunday, Sunday before last, about the Great Depression in Greenwich, one of the comments was made by the son of a fellow who was a teacher at the high school and said, "We did all right through the Depression in Greenwich because my father always had a salary." People who are town employees and their situation are changing rapidly, and it's even our first selectman got a government job from the banking industry. Sorry, I couldn't resist, but the point I'm getting at is a $100 salary next year or the year after will be worth $125 in purchasing power because the other people won't have a job if you keep on going with the economy the way it is. So therefore, a town employee has the choice of, one, keeping his job at a salary, which in purchasing power will become more, and the benefits that go with it, or getting a higher income and letting a number of those people go in his union. I think the union, at this point, would agree to a zero growth. I would suggest that a sense of the meeting from this body would be far more effective that said something that for henceforth, for the next two years, all negotiations shall aim at a zero growth in the labor contracts. That would wipe out in one fell swoop all of the deficit that we've been talking about earlier before this meeting, far more effective, far more broad brush, and goes to operations, which are a big expense. Remember, personnel are 70% of the cost of the Town of Greenwich. Not the nuts and bolts, but the personnel. A motion like that would give strength and direction to the people negotiating contracts, give them backing and opinion, and would be a reasonable rationale to go to the union with, not just a cotton chop, but a reasonable rationale of why we're doing that. And so I think the selectman has already suggested that with the 10% cut that he's talking about immediately, that they're looking for to avoid layoffs and protect jobs. So I think that that would be labor-friendly and at the same time cost us money. This contract's been negotiated, it's in the box, it's done, it's baked. Vote for it, and we'll move on. But I think from here on out, if you're talking about initiatives of the RTM and creating a policy, far more effective would be a sense of the meeting resolution which suggests a near-zero growth labor contracts. Thank you.
Further discussion on Item 1, the Silver Shield Contract. David Melick, District 8.
This is an interesting item. I wasn't actually going to speak on this. We have to sometimes take a step back and walk a mile in another man's shoes, or woman's shoes, preferably flats. Anyway, the reality is, for all jokes aside, about police and donuts and this and that, think about it next time you're at home, warm and dry. They're out patrolling, backcountry, wet on the avenue, and so forth. At the end of the day, this is a fair bargain. They work hard, and they are very important to us, no different than the fire personnel and other people in town. We have an issue now. We're dealing with it. We're talking about it from the selectman's office through the BET. Fair bargain, and I appreciate their work. I support the item. Thank you.
Further discussion on Item 1. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number one, and proceed to poll your delegation. I have the results of the vote on the combined items. Those were Items 2, 8, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. Those in favor, 179; opposed, 2; abstaining, 0. The combined items have carried. The next item to come before us is item number 3. Lynn Lavery, our selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Members of the RTM. Be it resolved that the following named persons nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Nathaniel Witherell Building Committee, William Hughes.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 3 has been moved and seconded. Jerry Isaacson with the report of the Health and Human Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, we interviewed Mr. Hughes last Tuesday evening. His total experience really has been in communications field, public relations and so on. He made an interesting comment, that he thought that the greatest contribution he can make is to tell the truth, to get the truth out about the Witherell Building Committee and its work, and get it to the public in a way that everybody can understand it. And I think we can all relate to that sentiment. Our vote was 10-0-0.
Thank you.
At District 1 and 2, absent.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with the report of our Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. We met on December 2 with Mr. Hughes. The vote was 10-0-2, 1 and 5 abstaining. The chairman of the North Nathaniel Witherell Building Committee, Andrew Fox, had recruited Mr. Hughes for his communication skills, believing that it was utmost importance for the Nathaniel Witherell Building Committee to have all the town bodies, including the RTM, understand clearly the plan, options, and consequences of the project renewal. They wish to avoid the collateral problems raised in other projects by poor and conflicting information to the town's decision-makers. Mr. Hughes is at the top of his profession in corporate public relations, communications, and information management. Among his many accomplishments was a successful shepherding of the IBM Headquarter construction in the Armonk North Castle area through the maze of overlapping jurisdictions and gatekeepers to get that built. So I would, we voted for him, and we recommend him highly for your appointment. Thank you.
Discussion on Item 3. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number 3, and proceed to poll your delegation. Item number 4 now comes before us. Selectman Lavery.
Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Nathaniel Witherell Board for a term beginning April 1, 2009, and expiring March 31, 2012, David G. Ormsby.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 4 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Isaacson with the Health and Human Services Report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a reappointment. David Ormsby is presently the chairman of that board, of Nathaniel Witherell. He has quite an amazing, I think, command of the facts in that organization. He regaled us, if you will, with some of those things about the number of private versus Medicare versus Medicaid, that the occupancy rate at the board meeting, a recent board meeting, and I attended that, was below their expectations, and they were very disappointed. However, the night before he came before our committee, excuse me, he had a new report, and it was 96.3%, which is where they wanted it to be. So he was very pleased about that. As you all know, Nathaniel Witherell broke even essentially, a $46,000 profit at their last year-end report, which was quite a turnaround for them. We thought highly of his report and his testimony before us. Our vote was 9-1-0. The one negative vote was from a former employee of Nathaniel Witherell, and he was concerned about cleaning aspect of the organization, but 9-1-0.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling.
David Ormsby came before us at the same time that we interviewed Mr. Banks and Mr. DiSappio. Mr. Ormsby is presently the chairman, as you know. He announced that the building committee's selection of SLAM Collaborative as the architects for Project Renew with a $1.8 million budget, they figured that was saved, they saved about $600,000 in that contract by reducing and negotiating. That's for all the architectural and engineering work, and they mentioned their experience at Greenwich Hospital and prior renovations at Nathaniel Witherell, as well as several not-for-profit schools, et cetera, around the area. There should be, believes, by 2010, there should be sufficient plans in progress to begin fundraising for Project Renew in earnest. The Friends of Nathaniel Witherell have already raised a starting fund of $105,000, targeting $140 a year, 3% growth each year carrying on. The Nathaniel Witherell's financial picture has improved successfully, as was reported earlier. Nathaniel Witherell has 202 beds, have been running, we told, 97% occupancy due to the efforts of staff. It must be understood that Nathaniel Witherell must maintain at least 60% of their beds for Medicaid patients. There was a discussion in our committee about the patient mix and preference for Greenwich Medicaid patients. Currently, the mix is running Medicaid, about 62%. They get $238 a day from the state. Medicare, which is approximately $320 a day, is at 14%. Self-pay is at 23%, and that's about $360 to $390 a day, depending on the accommodations the room they have, and rooms paid by insurance, the balance is about 1.5. What that shows you is the difference, I think it says Nathaniel Witherell per day operating cost, they figure about $270. So you can see the gap between Medicaid at $238 paid and $270 that it costs the town. And the offset has been done by the rehabilitation program that they've instituted, which is 48 beds on the fourth floor of the tower wing behind, which has helped offset the losses from the state in Medicaid. Program needs healthier referral record from local doctors and hospitals, so would please anybody refer their friends and neighbors. The present impact of the bad economy was questioned. Mr. Ormsby said that Nathaniel Witherell will only be requesting $240,000 in the capital expense this next time around, and that the operational costs have been honed to the bone, particularly sensitive situation since they run a 24/7 operation, 365 days a year. It's a life-safety situation of the hospital. Their largest expense is provided by 245 full and part-time employees. Mr. Ormsby reported a surprise inspection by the state and how they passed them, and they were all minor, and they're doing better than before. Mr. Ormsby was proud to announce that Nathaniel Witherell's volunteers, they've started to, they've got a new staff member who runs that, and they're now tracking it, and they have, as of recently, 10,000 hours of service, which is equivalent to seven to eight full-time members. We approve Mr. Ormsby, 12-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 4.
Question?
Yes, Felix Andriani, District 4.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Members of the RTM. I'd like to, first of all, commend David on his service, but I also have a grave concern with Nathaniel Witherell. At the Health and Human Services Committee, I presented the committee At the Health and Human Services Committee, I presented the committee with this survey that it takes 15.5 hours to clean one floor at Nathaniel Witherell. Presently, for the past year and over that year, there's only one employee, one full-timer, working on each floor. Now, given their half-hour lunch and two 15-minute breaks, they're only working seven hours on that unit, and I asked David that question. And if he's not here, I would like to get an answer from it. And if he's not here, I'd like to ask for a postponement so he can answer why this is continuing to happen. And my concern is that these floors and rooms are not getting cleaned properly. I understand the budget cuts and the way the economy is today, but when you give me an answer like that, and there's elderly here, people's mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, living in that building, it's a real concern to me, and I'd like to have him address this issue. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM, I think many people in this room know me as an agitator for the preserving Nathaniel Witherell as a town department and as a viable nursing home. When I first saw Mr. Ormsby's name put forward, I thought he might be the man to do the hard work to save Nathaniel Witherell, and I was right. When he was put in position and had suitable colleagues, I regarded my labors as done. Mr. Ormsby is, in my opinion, the finest person that we've had on the Nathaniel Witherell Board in my time in RTM. My colleague from District 4 has made, in my opinion, a minor objection, and I think we can overlook this and we can vote for Mr. Ormsby and be reminded in voting of his immense accomplishment. Thank you.
All right. Further discussion on Item Number 4. Now, let me just remind people, this is not an opportunity where we put people, as in a committee, in front where we ask them questions and interview them. That is committee work. Now people are given an opportunity to speak for or against the nomination. So Mr. Andriani did raise a question. There is no obligation on Mr. Ormsby to answer that. However, if Mr. Andriani, in the course of the discussion, does not get information satisfactory to him, I have told him I would recognize him to move to postpone this. That certainly is within his right to do. So as we go forward. Mr. Isaacson, Chairman of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Yes, I might add to my comments in light of Mr. Andriani's comments here, that he has been offered the opportunity by both Mr. Ormsby and Mr. Banksen to come to the Witherell at any time, let them take him around, show him everything, withhold nothing, and he will see that they are indeed down to the bone, excuse me, in terms of staffing, but they have maintained a high level of service to the people who are there. So the invitation is still out. Anybody with, I advise you, prior knowledge, but to go to Witherell, and you'll see for yourself what goes on there. I strongly recommend that we vote for Mr. Ormsby tonight.
Thank you. Further discussion on Item 4. Mr. Von Kaiserling, Chairman of our Appointments Committee.
Yes, the point that was brought up touches on a larger thing, which I had as part of my report from Mr. Banksen, which we didn't need tonight. But the question did come up in our committee about this, and it wasn't directly on Mr. Andriani's question, but in general about staffing and the expenses. And in my report, it said, "The response to budget questions," Mr. Banksen said, remember, Mr. Banksen is the Chairman of the Finance Committee of the Board of Nathaniel Witherell, said that Nathaniel Witherell budget had been squeezed as far as possible. Since staff is exhibiting early negative signs of overwork in the present position freeze, it may be squeezed too much. He mentioned that the single most important input to the quality and success of Nathaniel Witherell's system is the low turnover rate of employees at 7 percent a year, which results in higher levels of dedication and patient care. Similar institutions suffer as much as a 60 percent turnover rate. There was discussion of the factors informing Nathaniel Witherell budget and planning. It was mentioned that Nathaniel Witherell generates its own income stream, which offsets expenses and basically holds the Town General Fund safe from that. What that was coming down to in the direct response to Mr. Andriani's, and I've talked in other conversations with Mr. Banks and Mr. Ormsby, which I think I can share with you, is that it is true, this is a concern. Cleanliness in the building is of extreme interest to them because cleanliness, in this case, in a hospital institution, is absolutely paramount. It's not just a nicety for the frail and elderly who are very vulnerable to infection and other kind of things. It is absolutely essential. It concerns the Board highly on this, and they're working to it. On the second level of this, as I've mentioned in the room, and the offset of the freebie we give the state on Medicaid, it is important for them to attract people to Nathaniel Witherell, the self-pay and the Medicare people that have more option to come to that to offset the expenses. If it's not a well-cared-for institution, they will not get it, and therefore the cleanliness is very much import-
Please rise and state your point of order.
This is regarding David Ormsby. He's talking about budget issues with Medicaid.
Perhaps the gentleman does not make the connection.
Excuse me, I will respond to that.[1001.32][1001.32](Laughter). Mr. Von Kaiserling, in my view, is responding to a question raised by Mr. Andriani, and, well, regarding staffing issues in general and the effect it has on all operations. So I will rule that this debate is remain to the item before us. But Mr. Von Kaiserling, I think you're hearing the sentiment of the body. Could you please-
I'm just saying that there is a direct connection between positions, budget, and the cleanliness issue that Mr. Andriani is talking about. The Board is painfully aware of it. It is one of their top priorities that they're addressing. And as I said, they gave an invitation, they'd like to work with Mr. Andriani through his rather extensive experience at Nathaniel Witherell, having worked there before in one of these main areas, to resolve the question. So I think that that will be resolved shortly. Thank you.
Further discussion on Item 4.
As always, I wish I could speak for my chair because I think I have a loud enough voice, but in any event, I rise to say that Mr. Ormsby is just a remarkable individual. I was frankly quite surprised that he was not put on the consent calendar. Don't know why that was, but I can certainly see that this question could be answered, but I urge you to vote for him. His dedication to this is just remarkable, and I can't think of any better candidate for this position.[1097.01][1097.01](Applause).
The reason he was taken up separately is because District 10 wanted it that way. Further discussion on, further discussion, excuse me, further discussion on Item 4. Mr. Andriani, are you moving to postpone? All right. Is there, this is to the January meeting? Is there a second? Hearing none, that motion fails for lack of a second.[1132.42][1132.42](Applause). Will the District Chairs please mark your voting cards, Item Number 4, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the results of the vote on Item Number 1. This is the Silver Shield Contract. Those in favor, 138. Opposed, 40. Abstaining, 4. That item has carried. The next item is Item 15. Amy Seibert, Commissioner, Public Works.
Yes, Item 15, resolved that the sum of $350,000 be, and the same is hereby appropriated to be added to the capital account number Z3455956029042, known as Glenville Fire Station.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 15 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports on this item, beginning with? David Melick, Chairman of our Public Works Committee.
Thank you. Public Works met last Monday. Dave Thompson, Head and Engineer, and Amy Seibert, Department Works Head, were in place to discuss that with the committee. The ask is for money to round out the contingency on the rebid Glenville Firehouse project. The initial bids came back, last go-round, higher than anticipated, in a kind of a budget kind of mood. Work was cut out, an elevator was deleted, 1,000 square feet less work was taken out of the project. The project was rebid, and the bids came in in such a way that left the contingency fund short and down to, I believe, $72,000 or $75,000. The committee had a few different positions on the issue. Some, I think, were reflective of the concerns of the financial environment right now, that there was a wish to actually stop the project altogether. There was a balance of discussion about, well, it was rebid, it was redesigned and rebid, and therefore it should be okay with the existing contingency. But the general tone of the group, the discussion and support from our paid professionals was that the reality is that without the contingency, delays and problems can occur, and this is with the exception of, I think that I don't think we have a failed scope or a flawed scope, what happened at Hamilton Avenue. They didn't have enough contingency to do things that arose that they absolutely had to, and it can have enormous impacts on the schedule. And if it was a project in a bubble, no problem. It's not a project in a bubble. There's more to this project. It's about the King Street Firehouse. It's about the Central Firehouse. It's about the operational expense burden that the current facility has on the town infrastructure. It's also about the fact that we have emergency vehicles that can't use the building. And ultimately, it also gets down to a deficient work environment and a non-ADA compliant facility. So the committee voted 8-2-0. Districts 1 and 3 absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Frederick with the Finance Committee report.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, members and guests, the, I won't go into the history of the bidding. I think that was covered. After accounting for the new construction cost from the bid in September, only $72,000 remains to cover contingency and outfitting. As a result, $100,000 in outfitting cost will be requested during the 2009, 2010 budget. So this $350,000 is being sought for approval today to resize the contingency fund. The discussion in the committee included lowering the contingency, eliminating it, rebidding the project, given the lower economic environment and lower commodity cost. This has been confirmed as not being an option. Also considered approving the full amount, given the department's record of meeting its project budgets and having on-time completion. The views on having the contingency in hand also varied from increased likelihood of overspending to improving their potential negotiating position. This compares to the perceived negative impact of the DPW not having the contingency, which could lead to delays, as noted earlier, and even add more cost, potentially worsening their negotiating position. It was generally thought that the contractor will experience lower cost, and given that they have what we consider a fairly lucrative concert, contract with embedded contingency, members of the committee felt they should therefore limit requests for increases to meet changes. Practicality of that is yet to be seen. Given it was unclear during our meeting whether the contract was final and an award letter sent and executed, strong opinions were expressed to either rebid or renegotiate to offset these embedded lower costs. This has since been clarified where the DPW provided us a letter summarizing the project and confirming that the bid letter was issued and the award accepted. So there's no option for rebidding. No one in the meeting suggested, or even considered, I think, canceling the project, but rather to control cost and, to control and limit cost. The committee continues to be supportive of the project. The station's poor condition has been illustrated by the DPW, who's rated the project a 22 on a scale of 27 being the worst. Our vote of 7-5-0 reflects the range of opinions expressed. Rationale for voting against the increase included the town's pressure to tighten its belt, concern that not enough clarity was given on inquiries such as which elements of the contract were fixed price, concern that the contract was negotiated during dramatically different economic times. Of course, we don't have soothsayers in those positions, and there's a long lead time before you get to a bidding process. And also having a bid at the time of peak commodity prices. Again, you know, it's hard to foresee these things and where the economy at the time was going. On the other hand, those in support were concerned with rebidding, delaying the project, and thought that encouraging the contractor to minimize cost, given its interest in doing business with town, would suffice. Albeit, the facts remain, the vote was close, and each person will have to be guided by their own views on whether a contingency should be appropriated in advance of these costs actually being incurred during this economic time. We should also keep in mind that this was a low bid of 2.8 million out of a total of 12 bids, where the high bid was 3.8 million. I'll also note that there was a general sense that the DPW has been one of the best departments in managing its construction budgets. However, the split remains on how one approaches managing project changes and the resulting project contingencies. Our vote was 7-5-0 in favor of approving the appropriation with Districts 1, 2, 5, 7, and 8 opposed. In addition to receiving the DPW letter of clarification on Friday after our meeting, it's potential that if this was discussed during the meeting, may have impacted our vote. In addition to a consideration for possibility of lowering the appropriation amount, may have changed the opinion of some of those opposed to the project. Thanks.
One moment, Mr. Delman. Mr. Kennedy, could I see you up on the stage, please? Thank you. Dr. Delman with the Town Services report on Item 15.
Good evening. Almanelli met with us on Tuesday. There was a lot of debate about this item. Several members felt that with the state of the economy and lower oil cost, it should be open for rebidding. We were informed that the state sets the pay scale for this project, and it's not up to the contractor, so that would not change. The supply companies already have items on hand that were processed during the oil, high oil and steel price period, and it is doubtful those prices would drop a bit as well. There's already enough funding to proceed with this project, and none of what we're asked to appropriate tonight will be used if everything goes as planned. However, if they run into unexpected issues, this project may drag on longer than expected as all partial funding will need to return to this body for approval. Town Services voted 9 in favor, 2 opposed, 1 abstained. The 2 no votes felt we should open for a cheaper bid, and the 1 abstention was due to an ethical conflict.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 15. Will the District Chairs please mark your voting cards, Item Number 15, and proceed to poll your delegation? The last of our agenda items now comes before us, Item Number 16. Doug Wells, Chairman of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, Item 16 actually consists of 2 resolutions. The first on Page 6 of the call, it is a resolution to amend Chapter 13 of our ordinances entitled Trees and Vegetation. And then on Page 11 of the call, there is a resolution to amend the nuisances ordinance at Chapter 6C. They are as they appear in the call.
All right. That being offered on behalf of, that's offered on behalf of the Legislative and Rules Committee, is that correct?
I'm bringing it back to the Legislative and Rules Committee. I haven't given my report yet.
Okay.
And my report, of course, is a motion to postpone this item.
Right, but, all right, so it does not require a second. May we have the reports on item 16? Mr. Wells?
Thank you. The committee took this item up on December 1, appearing on behalf of the resolution were Bruce Spayman, tree warden for the town of Greenwich, as well as Conservation Director Denise Savageo and Abby Wadler from the Law Department. If you recall, this item first came to the RTM in October, when it was referred back to our committee. We have met in October to revise the matter. At the end of our October 24 meeting, it was agreed that Abby Wadler would submit a redlined version of the original ordinances, which would highlight all the proposed revisions to the RTM. However, while Attorney Wadler reported that she submitted the redlined version to the town clerk's office, it did not appear either in the call or in the explanatory comments. As a result, our committee felt that the resolution is not in legal order, because this body does not know the scope of the changes without being able to compare it to the original ordinances. We also think that there are some other language problems, and we want to address penalty provisions. And so, for all these reasons, our committee moved and unanimously voted in favor of a motion to postpone this item to the January meeting. Our vote to postpone was 11, 0, 0. District Ten absent.
Thank you. Franklin Blumer with the report of our Land Use Committee.
The Land Use Committee took this item up very briefly at our meeting last Monday evening. We also had Mr. Spayman, Ms. Savageo, and Ms. Wadler with us. By the time we took this item up, we were informed that the Legislative and Rules Committee had voted to offer a motion to postpone. We, of course, had the unmarked version that's in the call and were advised that there were quite a number of changes and that a redlined version would be available to us at a later time. On that basis, we voted 12 in favor, none opposed, with no abstentions, to offer a motion to postpone, and we will offer that motion in the event that Mr. Wells fails to do so.
Thank you. Karen Sodakhan, Chairman of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening. Having been informed Tuesday morning that this motion was going to be postponed, our committee did not meet, so I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
On behalf of the Legislative and Rules Committee, we move to postpone this to the January meeting.
Thank you. That being offered on behalf of a committee does not require a second. Discussion on the motion to postpone this to January. Mr. Boutel, District Eight.
Mr. Moderator, I support the idea of making the corrections and bringing this item back to us. My concern is, originally, we referred this item to Legislative and Rules so that they could make the corrections. When you postpone an item to a date certain, what was in the call tonight is what will be in the call in January.
That is correct.
That is my understanding. If you postpone an item, it comes back-
That is correct. If I might describe procedurally what our options are. We can postpone to a date certain. That, as Mr. Boutel described, brings the item back to us in the exact form that it is in front of us tonight. The other option is to refer an item to a committee. That then allows that committee, and that is what we did with this item previously, and it was given to Legislative and Rules. Now, practically, you understand how this works. They relied on the Law Department to incorporate the points that they discussed, and what came back was needed further work, according to them. So, you are correct.
So, Mr. Moderator, I'm simply suggesting to the committee so that we speed up our work in January, so that we save paper, because you'll get it back in the form you have tonight. We'll all have to be mailed a substitute copy once they've done their work. I would suggest to you that you vote against the motion to postpone.
Well, we could do this. I mean, are you suggesting that we refer this back?
We refer it back to the committee with instructions to bring it to us in January.
All right, so we can, upon unanimous consent, since this motion is now before us, it's not in the control of the moving party, but we can, by unanimous consent, agree to an amendment of the motion. Mr. Wells, do you move to change your motion to refer back to land uses this time? All right. So, is there any objection to that? Hearing none. What is now before us is a motion, what is now before us is a motion to refer item 16 back to the Legislative and Rules Committee. Discussion on that motion? All right. All those in favor of referring item 16 to the Legislative and Rules Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion to refer has carried. Thank you very much. All right. We're waiting on some vote tabulation, so I'm not going to give you those at the moment. But as we all know, there is one further item that District Ten would like to bring before us. Joan Caldwell, Chairman of District Ten.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting. I move that the body take up an item, a sense of the meeting resolution, that does not appear on the call, a copy of which was emailed to all, most, if not all, of you over the weekend with some explanatory comments. It has to do with the imposition of a 90-day moratorium on capital monies not spent and encumbered or in any way contracted for.
All right. As I had explained, under Freedom of Information requirements, we must first vote to take such a non-agenda item up by a two-thirds majority vote. And I will repeat, anyone abstaining or not voting on the card will not be counted for the purpose of calculating that two-thirds majority. Mr. Von Kaiseling, do you have a question?
Yes, sir. Through you, Mr. Moderator, is there a published form that's being presented of what this resolution is in its exit, or does some people have it? Is there anywhere it's published, or is it copied and distilled from the body?
Is there an answer to that question? All right, why don't we do this? Why don't you read what the motion is? And I'll then call for a vote. It will be a non-debatable motion to take this up. If there is a two-thirds majority to consider it, we will then proceed to discussion on the item.
This is strictly the motion, not the explanation before it. Resolved, it is the sense of this meeting that a 90-day moratorium be imposed on the expenditure of all appropriated capital money allocated to projects for which contracts have not already been signed or that have not been deemed essential by the First Selectman and/or the BET.
May I have a copy of that? All right. Mr. Von Kaiseling?
Has this resolution been discussed or acted upon by any other body of the RTM, with the exception of the District Captain?
Well, Mr. Brady, did your Education Committee take this up tonight? Bob Brady, Chairman of our Education Committee.
It did, but it voted three to five to take it up. It failed, or five to three, but it failed to get the two-thirds. We did not take it up. We have no report.
Okay. So, my understanding is then, no committee reviewed this, and no district reviewed this, as this was passed on Thursday night by District Ten, and all other districts and committees had met by then. Mr. Von Kaiseling, do you have a further question?
Mr. Moderator, no other body of the-
All right, Mr. Von Kaiseling, I'm now considering that debate, and the motion to take this up is non-debatable. So, I will now call for a vote. If you are in fa, well, we're going to have to take a recorded vote on this. So, I ask the district chairs to mark your voting cards. Motion to consider District Ten sense of the meeting resolution. This is simply, should we debate it tonight? If you are in favor of taking this up and considering it tonight, you should vote yes. If you oppose our taking this non-agenda item up tonight, you should vote no. And we will await the result of the vote of that meeting before proceeding further. All right. I do have the results of the three separate items for which I have not yet reported a vote. The first is item number three, the appointment of William Hughes to be a member of the Nathaniel Witherell Building Committee. Those in favor, 177; opposed, two; abstaining, one. That item has carried. Item four is the appointment of David Ormsby to the Nathaniel Witherell Board. Those in favor, 180; opposed, one; abstaining, one. That item has carried. Item 15 was the appropriation for the Glenville Fire Station. Those in favor, 125; opposed, 54; abstaining, two. That item has carried. So, we have now taken care of all agenda items. We await the result of this vote on the motion to take up the District Ten sense of the I have the result of the vote, whoop, I have the result of the vote on the motion to take up District Ten's non-agenda item, which requires a two-thirds majority to pass. Those in favor, 77; opposed, 94; abstaining, four. That item has failed. There being no further business to come before the meeting, an absent objection, this meeting is adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Have a very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and have a safe trip home.